Select Board Meeting, July tenth, two thousand twenty-five, six oh two P M. I'd like to call the meeting to order. Or member will call.
Carl Stromeyer.
Mike Gardner.
Amy Percy.
Brian Harris.
Can you hear your name? Everyone rise for their Pledge of Allegiance, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag. And to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you.
Approval agenda. Public comment, minutes, warrants, wait permits, town updates from town officials, the resolution, the health officer here. Attorney policy, cat TV, deputy fire warden, transfer station, public comment, and adjourn. I don't think the updates from town officials is gonna take a whole bunch of time. We don't have a bunch of those, so. Think we, I was thinking about moving the resolution in front of that, but.
That's fine.
But I, I think it'll be. Matter of a couple of minutes, so. I have a motion to approve the agenda.
So moved.
Any discussion? All those in favor? Public comment. Do I have any public comment?
Jenny.
Jenny, sorry, I'm, I gotta pick my head up, Jenny, I'm sorry. Sorry, Jenny.
Hi Jenny, Jenny Dewar Powell. Uh, I just thought when I was going on to check about this uh, meeting tonight, I noticed on the website a couple of things. One is that, the very first thing that comes up on the homepage is still about the um. Public hearings for the new, for what to do with the old town off and all of the sex about that, and that's really old. Um, and I feel like that's a kind of kinky thing to come up with first since it was so controversial. Um, and then the other thing I noticed is that the select board meetings are not on the calendar part of the. Homepage. The, the meeting itself is under the calendar, but like they've had a couple of meetings on Tuesdays and nothing else on the calendar.
Just on our website?
That's on the website homepage of the website.
Alright, I'll check that out.
Thank you.
Here, let me just make sure. Alright. Any other public comment?
Nothing mine.
Any hands up?
Not like, sorry.
Okay, approval minutes. June twenty-fourth, two thousand twenty-five, special select board meeting.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion corrections? All those in favor? Minutes to June twenty-sixth, two thousand twenty-five, select board meeting.
So moved.
Second.
Corrections, additions? All those in favor? Warrants. Countess payable July fourth, fifty-two thousand two hundred and thirty dollars and forty-one cents.
So moved.
Second.
Questions? All those in favor?
Hi.
Countess payable July eleventh, seventy-eight thousand five hundred and fifty-six dollars and thirty-three cents.
So moved.
Second.
Any questions, comments? Corrections, all those in favor? Payroll July fourth, fourteen thousand five hundred and eighteen dollars and thirty-three cents.
So moved.
Second.
Any questions, comments? All those in favor? Payroll July eleventh, two thousand twenty-five, eleven thousand six hundred and six dollars and fifty-two cents.
So moved.
Second.
Questions? Corrections, comments, all those in favor? Access weight permits, I have two here, one from Beaking Sales Acquisition. There is a fleet permit. Joel signed it. And I have one from Consolidated Communication. Fleet permit and Joel has assigned it.
Make a motion to approve. Per. Application. Both permits.
Second.
Any questions? All those in favor? Updates from town officials. Real quick, I'm sure everyone saw. The update. About the church. And the lawsuit. Um, we will enter that. I don't wanna read the whole thing, it's like five pages long, six pages long. Um, that'll be entered into the minutes. For tonight's meeting, anybody that wants a copy, I'm sure we can get a copy to, you know, anybody that wants one. Um, but they will be entered into the minutes. Um, in a nutshell. Um, the court basically dismissed the church's claim. To the church. Building itself. As, as being owned by the church, being owned by the town.
Section of the carriage house.
Yeah, a section of the carriage house is still under, in question, so. I don't know where it goes from there. Um, I think the select board needs to. I think we need to sit down, we, we. Obviously have not sat down and talked about this. Court decision whatsoever. I think we need to sit down. In an executive session, just, and discuss this decision. And see where we wanna go from here and what.
Consult with our attorney and see what we do next.
That, that's right, that's right. I just, I think it's. It's kinda new, we obviously haven't talked about it. I think you need to sit down and talk about it, and I think we probably even need to dedicate. One night specifically to that for, with our attorney. And that's just my feeling, so. I have, I'm not sure that everybody.
Did you wanna try to schedule something now, or do you wanna? Just wait and see what Mr. Fisher has for availability?
I think we'll, I think we'll see what. I thi- I think we should. Well, we can talk about that right now, actually, cuz that's in our, should be in our new returning policy tonight. If we approve that as written. I think, I think we need to have approval that. Myself. Reach out to Bob Fisher, or, or Tara can reach out to him for us. And, and see what his availability is to set up a meeting to talk about this specifically and where we go from here. I have ideas that I'd like to do from here, but that's totally my own thing. You know, I, I think we need to discuss that as a board.
Yeah, definitely need his counsel.
Can I have a, an approval to have Tara reach out to Bob to schedule a meeting for that when he's available?
Make a motion, we authorize Tara to reach out to town attorney for scheduling a meeting.
Second one.
All those in favors? Sure.
I think it is important as well that the court documents are being entered into the minutes. And I would encourage people who have questions, those are public documents, to please read those documents. And I'm probably the only person on this like board that gets a lot of questions about the church, and I would just say. It sounds like there's a lot of speculation all over the place. Please read the documents.
I, I would, um. I'm curious if it's really an executive session. I mean, I know that legal is an executive session, but it's not a legal de- decision that you're discussing. It's, it's a, um. A conversation about the church, and I think that's probably something that should be happen, happening in the open.
I think there's a couple of legal decisions. And I agree with you.
But I would just, I would just caution you to make sure that you're only talking about those legal decisions in your executive session and your. Conversation with your ideas and so on happens.
I agree. I totally agree with that. I think there's a couple of legal decisions that. That need to be made. And I think it, I think that executive should be fairly quick. But I also believe that you're a hundred percent correct. The ideas that I have moving forward are not an executive session item. They, they are definitely an open session item. For sure that this board needs to discuss if. You know, I'll bring them up, and if they don't wanna discuss them, they don't wanna discuss them. That's, that's the way it is. And that's fine with me. But I agree a hundred percent. I think there's a couple of legal decisions that we need to make. And, and I think once, once these documents have been read. People will agree with that.
And Mike, I wanna caution. The document didn't say, they have thirty days to refile.
That's true, that's true. So this, so this isn't.
They have been done.
Oh, that's right, that's right.
But again, to your point, that's the whole reason people should be reading.
Right, that, yes. But it's not a done deal.
That's right. No, that's right, there's, there's processes and whatever, and I think that's, to Jenny's point, that's why it's incredibly important to read this. Doc correct. Race track. State of Vermont versus Greenmont Race Track LLC. I had talked to G J Guero about this two months ago, knew this was coming down the board. But we had to, he had to wait for it to become. A public document, basically the state of Vermont. Um, and, and I, this, I'm gonna. I'm gonna say that I know, I know that the residents of the town of Powell have been incredibly patient. About what's going on down there. And I know you've, people have pushed really hard to make things happen down there. This has been. I think three, three years.
I think longer than that.
It's been like three years in the making right here, this, this one particular judgment, okay? It was in the state's hands. I, I know that people felt we weren't doing anything about it. When our hands were kinda tied, there was not a lot we could do, it was in the state's hands. Here's, here's the state's findings. You know, basically, basically there's a fine, they have to fence it, but now I'm, I'm gonna caution people. And I, and I really want you to pay attention to what I'm saying right now, out there in the general public. When I talk to G J. He's the fires, head of fire and safety for, for this particular thing right here. It's now becomes a process. Now the state has to follow guidelines. They have to bid out the fencing, they have to bid out the structural engineer, they have to bid every single thing that's in this document. They have to bid it out. The state is required to bid that out. So is the fence gonna start going up tomorrow? Nope. Are the structural engineers gonna come in tomorrow? Nope. It's a process they have to follow. Is the process going to happen? Yes, it is. Once again, this document here, it's a, it's a court decision, judgment order will be placed into our minutes. Please read it. Please, because it's not. It's not just a cut and dry thing, it, it, there's. You know, any of the contractors that have ever worked with the state will tell you exactly how this works. It's a process. And G J told us the same thing, told me the exact same thing. It's gonna be, it's gonna take a while.
Come September.
Well, I think that, I don't think this started right off the bat. But this has definitely been like three years into making this order. This judgment order will be in the minutes as well. And that's kinda it from town officials. Sorry, Danny, it's been longer than I anticipated, but. Which brings us to the resolution, affirming the constitutional rights of all people of Vermont. This is the constitution, or resolution, sorry, as it was rewritten, we're not reading the constitution. Whereas the town of Powell Select Board, having considered the matter, hereby resolves that the town of Powell affirms its commitment. To support the protections afforded to all people by the United States Constitution and the Constitution of the State of Vermont. Any board discussion?
I think we hammered this out a lot our last meeting. I think there was a very vigorous. Discussion and even I would say debate between. Members of this community and even members of the board, and I think, um, we worked very hard at the end of that discussion. To get to a point, to boil this down to a sentence. That I think most people here felt very comfortable. I, I don't know. Who doesn't feel comfortable with saying that we're committed to support protections afforded to all people by the United States Constitution, the Constitution of the State of Vermont, period. Without him reading anything else. So, um, that's what we asked to have returned us. We asked for those revisions, those revisions were made, and that's what's in front of us. Sure that we need to rehash the whole conversation.
We had all, we had an email. I'm gonna, you wanna read that email? Okay, we had an email from, from resident, so we're gonna read that email. Um, it, it does relate to the. Um, to the, to the resolution.
Here, there's a title, Select Board. This is from Donald Azan. I have a couple of comments regarding the lengthy discussion proposed resolution brought forth at last night's meeting. I do hope you take the time to read it. I unfortunately will be out of count for your next meeting, or I would have sent this in person. The panel Select Board has often been put in positions where they have to quote pick a perceived quote sign, even on issues that are far less controversial. Over the years, select board deliberations, decisions and actions, whether it be about ATVs, the debate. Over elected versus appointed town clerks and assessors, how to treat public comments, FOIAs, et cetera. Have resulted in five people either earning the trust and vote of citizens or not. These issues so difficult were in fact municipal matters. Last night's proposed resolution is not subject to select board approval or disapproval when one looks at the statutory requirements of a select board. It is a symbolic gesture. That's being asked of select boards by select individuals and possibly special interest partisan organizations all over Vermont. At one point during the meeting, the comment was made that to adopt it would satisfy this group, what group exactly? It was seen that a group should identify themselves as such, especially if they have some formal organizations such as the Democratic Caucus or similar. If the select board members wish to engage in resolutions for all groups, if so, I can envision future select board meetings. With hour-long resolutions of all kinds, possibly competing resolutions that simply have no legal standing. Are non-binding and enact a completely adverse still for the board's legislative duties. When it was proposed, if the wording simply say all, that word became a point of issue, which leads me to believe that the resolution is inherently regarding a specific group of people. Does that mean in three months you might have to do another resolution for another group? For the record, the word all is in our Pledge of Allegiance, our Declaration of Independence. The Constitution and the Bill of Rights. Furthermore, chapter one and article seven of the Vermont Constitution ensures that. Quote, government be operated for the benefit of all the people and not for the advantage of a single person, family or group, end quote. How much clearer the word all be? The select board as a whole represents the interests and needs of the entire municipality. Aside from federal funding, grants and requirements, select board should carefully consider. What it is they hope to accomplish by spending over an hour discussing national politics of which they have no authority over. Much like discussing Facebook. Our officer caution you to be careful that you don't create a situation where the town could potentially suffer repercussions for federal grants and other fiscal opportunities by drawing a public partisan line in the sand, so to speak. As the town lawyer and the L C T has said many times, even the appearance of a conflict of interest can be problematic. If one or multiple members on the board have a personal interest in activism involving national politics or federal entities. The best and most efficacious place for those activities is outside of their means of work. Powell has a very politically diverse and passionate citizenry. We all have our personal beliefs and values. We exercise our rights to vote nationally and locally, but we do so privately. I do not wish to see our local boards using this way. Something I have noticed in this town is that if someone doesn't shout yes without question on an issue, then the assumption is that the person must be against it. This is where our complicated history of villainization, villainizing our neighbors, has happened more often than not. For example, a woman last night opposing the cell tower is likely not against emergency services, having phone service just how it affects her. A person opposing a budget request may not be against the group asking for it, it simply means they have a different viewpoint, or wish to see their tax dollars get elsewhere. Not signing or supporting a resolution that has no more power than the paper it's written on does not mean you don't support the Constitution or the rights of those within our borders. To due process and humane treatment. Please don't fall for false. If you don't do this resolution, it means insert whatever label you wish. I suspect that every single one of you believes in upholding the Constitution, but may have different beliefs on what that looks like. You may have people, like they do in northern Vermont. Who have family that work for the US border. You may have families that are worried about their legal status. The examples are endless and everyone is entitled to their personal feelings. However, you are not in the business of legislating such things, and you don't have to immerse yourselves in matters that are, quite frankly, beyond the scope of your roles. But if you choose to do so, you are willingly opening a door that cannot be easily closed. If residents or groups wanting to hear board members' opinions on national politics, they should reach out to them privately and ask for a conversation. Putting board members into positions where they are pressured to engage in an unanimously approve or disapprove. Of national politics and actions taken by an administration they hold no sway or influence over is not what is outlined in the roles and responsibilities of the select board. Beyond that, if the cause is necessary and online division amongst the board, would otherwise work amicably on local matters. I would consider the board taking the approach of American Legion, seeing it completely nonpartisan, and that is exactly the way they can rightly say they represent all veterans. The most important thing the board can do in a time of national division and discord is to be strong enough to unite and refrain from any resolutions outside of your roles. It would then be considered the consensus of everyone in town. Unity is not conformity. One hour and thirty-eight minutes of a two-hour, twenty-minute meeting was spent on this issue. For municipal government to adopt a resolution on a federal matter that holds zero effectual weight is at best performance. And at worst, the very thing that risks dividing not just our elected officials, but citizenry of Powell as a whole. There is a fading saying, take care of home before pressing the streets. I'm certain you have matters right here that you can and do have an obligation to address. Powell is our home, not Washington DC or LA. That hour and thirty-eight minutes might have been better spent on strategizing, finding a new health officer, troubleshooting more ways to handle. The new compactor, outlining and defining town policies, bringing April employment to town, et cetera. Small communities and governments work best when they leave the national politics at their nearest work. Donalds.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. You're welcome.
So. One, one comment that. One thing that I wanna say is that. I'm in the chairperson of the board now, all but one year that I've sat here. And I have never. Ever asked. Person. Or group of people. What kind of group they stand for when they come in to speak to the select board, and I never will. I don't care. Your residents of the town of Powell?
Period.
Period. And that's the group that you should belong to when you come to this board. When you, when you make a public comment on Zoom. When you send us an email, when you do anything, the group you should belong to is the town of Powell. Period. And I will walk out this door if I'm sitting on a board. And a board member asks, what group you stand for? I will leave at that point, period, because the people who voted for me to sit here. That they know that's the kind of person that I am. I don't care. If you have a valid point, you have a valid point. Period. And that's what I have to say on that. As far as the time, I think that. I think that for public comment portion of that. Resolution, that discussion. I think it was incredibly respectful. I think that's. Something that I've seen lack in this town. Years ago, and I think it was, I don't think it's the recent past, but I think some people who have been here. And went here for a while will say the same exact thing. There were times when there was no respect for people's. Comments and their opinions. And I think it was, if, if that's the only thing that we got out of one hour and thirty-eight minutes, so be it. So be it. That's what, that's what this is about.
You got to hear from everybody.
Exactly. Everybody, I think every single person who wanted to talk that night got their chance to speak. We did not cut anybody off. We didn't cut anybody short. I didn't hold anybody to three minutes. If it took you five minutes to say what you needed to say, if we came back around to you for a second time, that's what happened. And that's the way it should be on certain things. And I, and I'm proud of that fact that that's the way this board handled it.
And that's why the language we ended up with because of that discussion.
Well, and to Thomas's point, I will say that is, and, and absolutely, like, that's why we ended up. With a simple sentence that uses the word off. I agree, we do not live in DC or LA, but we do live in the United States. And it says all, and so. I'm grateful for people being willing to work that hard. Last. Meeting, so.
Anything else from the board? Nope. It's a board fracture. Go ahead.
I'll make a motion that we accept the resolution as printed.
I will second that motion.
Any discussion from the board? I will open it up for a brief period for public comment if there is any, but it's gonna be very brief. We're not gonna rehash anything. If there's something new. Then that's fine. Other than that, it's gonna be. And, and I will shut you down if it becomes an argument. It's just gonna happen. Anything, anybody in the room? Have anything? And I'm gonna go to you guys first because you're here. Can you just say your name, please?
Uh, I sent you guys a letter. Expressing some concerns about staffing and employees of the town. The re- the resolution as we just read tonight, much better than what I was hearing. Where I wrote the letter. I was saying, if you hadn't read the letter, then just read it. And understand what my concerns were and suggestions were. Because that's a resolution as it is right now, it may be a weak point. If not, then. Consider, consider some of my concerns.
Oh, I'm gonna respond to that. I don't respond a lot, but I will. I did read your letter, and I think, I think on. The initial resolution or some of the. Things that we talked about before we came to this one here. I think you had a really valid point. I, I think your letter was a valid point about that. I think with this. My opinion. I think with this resolution right here, it's kind of a moot point. All this says is we, we, we. Support. The, the documents that are already in place. Period. And so I think your, your letter, and I, and I do think your letter before this, before you were able to read this, like you said, did, did have a valid. Anything else? Public comment? Oh, go ahead, Bill. Sorry.
Uh, it's the last meeting of Bill Lowesbury, town of Vermont, resident voter. At the last meeting, I requested this be put before the town voters. Since this resolution has been modified and shrunk down, a lot cleaner, it's a lot neater. I would like to withdraw that request from the board at this time.
Thank you. Thank you.
I, I actually could say. Sorry, Jenny, still Jenny, Jenny Dewar from Powell. While I can say this by heart, I'm gonna read it, and I just want to remind everyone the preamble of the Constitution of the United States. We the people of the United States, in order to form a more perfect union, establish justice, ensure domestic tranquility. If anyone remembers the song. Provide for the common defense, promote the general welfare, and secure the blessings of liberty to allow ourselves and our posterity. Do ordain and establish this constitution for the United States of America. We are all members of the United States of America. And I for one, support the constitution, so I appreciate the work you do.
Thank you. Anything on Zoom here? One hand's up? Any more comments? I have a motion, and I have a second. Any more discussion by the board? All those in favor? Resolution passes. All, all those opposed?
Thank you, everybody that worked on this.
Thank you.
Yep, Amelia Silver in Powell. Um, I just wanted to say that after the meeting that we had here the last time. I came away so. Encouraged and. Proud of everybody here. This. Mike, as you said, there've been, there's been a lot of history, a lot of conflict, and a lot of. Failure to listen in our town, as we're, we're, we're a motley crew.
True.
But, uh, the respect that everyone showed. Was really heartening and just made me feel, once again, how lucky I am that I live here and I really appreciate. The thoughtfulness of the members of the select board. And, um, the time that, that was taken to, to address something, and I. I understand Donna's letter, you know, that was a long time. And it's a cliche, but I'll say it anyway, democracy. Is messy and boring and takes a lot of time, and it often, you often have. Long meetings. I mean, when you think about the Constitutional Congress, you know, they were arguing for twelve hours on their feet about sometimes one phrase. So I think it was actually pretty economic use of our time, and really thank you all so much. Uh, thanks for. For do- for doing what you do.
Thank you, thank you.
Let's second that.
Okay, thank you all for.
Thank you, everybody.
Uh, health officer, continue discussion and passable action. I know this was brought up last meeting and we brought it.
And we did. And we did vote. Already. So I feel like, I guess I'm, I guess I'm a little bit unclear as to whether the continued discussion and possible action is.
Well, didn't somebody like submit a letter of interest after we appointed Mike? I thought that's what it was.
I haven't seen that.
Yeah, I don't. Yeah, I didn't see a letter. I just remember somebody brought it up.
Julie called in and said there was some. Well, I, I don't even know what there was. We checked the health officer phone. Cause there is a, there is a phone number issued to the town health officer.
Yeah.
Tara checked that. I don't have that phone. I just use my own. And um. There was, there were no messages on that. You know, for a, for a health officer complaint. So I don't know where the complaints came from. There's no emails. There's no record of a complaint coming in from anybody. So I don't know where that came from. And unfortunately you're not here tonight, so I don't know. Um, but. Any, any complaint that comes into. Hannah, Tara or Julie. They give them my cell phone number or Hannah and Tara sometimes will. Just reach out to me directly and let me know what's going on, whether it's health officer zoning or select board. And then I will return the calls and that's what I've been doing with health officer. Is if someone has a. Question or a concern. Go look at it. I. Talk to him about it. I. Give him guidelines. I do whatever, I, you know. And I think, I think the biggest reason that we said, okay, enough is enough is because the health officer. Has been such a huge revolving position. You know, it's just, it's hard to get somebody to stay in there as the health officer. There's times when the health officer doesn't do a single thing. And then there's times when you're. You know, we have a former health officer in the room. Try to tell you, there's, there's times when man, it just seems like it never ends. And, you know, it's, it's um. I think the accessibility is one thing. I think, you know, consistency is another. You know, and, and it's not that I want the health officer position really, you know, I, I, I'm, it's not, it's not that I don't want it. That's for sure. But I just think we need somebody that's going to be there for a while. And I don't plan on leaving. You know, unless we find somebody else. And if somebody else really wants to commit to it, that's fine. But I think it is a commitment.
That is an appointed position, right?
Yes, it is a pointed position.
Well, we nominate somebody, then the state appoints them.
Right, and I'm saying that we, that is part of our appointment nomination process. And I just feel like we've gone through that process.
Repeatedly.
Is Julia?
Okay.
Sure, Bill.
Just a question, Bill Lounsbury again. Is there a formal training required for this position?
No. I just, there's a manual. Yep, no, there's a manual that, that you follow for. You know, there's, there's so much of it in there that really doesn't pertain to like anything else. Doesn't pertain here. But you know, there is a, there is a very um detailed manual. For things, processes and how things work and. You know, I refer to the manual and I'm not going to lie. Somebody called with a complaint. I look it up because I don't know, I don't know the right answers most of the time. I'm sure Fred did the same thing. You look up the, you know, what your, what your duties are, what, what your. You know, what you can and can't do. No, I understand.
It's a big picture. There's a manual or, you know, training that pertain.
It's a big book and they say good luck. That's about it.
Fred.
I, I think what we found. When I was doing it, that it works best when something is involved. Best resolved. By either competition.
There's a lot of overlaps.
You can't do, you can't do it.
No, and, and I think you're right, Fred. And I, and I think that was in the discussion that we had.
That was in the discussion that we were.
That we had about.
That's why it kind of makes sense.
Only you can buy it and health officers and one, you know. And we did have this discussion about, you know, should they be separate? Should they be the same type of thing, you know? So we did, we did have that discussion. So if, I don't think there's any action that we need to take if the board's comfortable with where we're at.
Oh yeah, she said that Julie was.
Yeah, I thought Julie was supposed to pipe in on it. I mean, if she wants to. I gotta get home because of.
Hey Julie, you there?
Probably just. Talking in the background, she's doing something.
I'm trying to unmute the computer.
Hate that.
I don't need to yell.
I didn't mean to yell.
No, it's just the way it's playing over the speaker.
You guys are echoing and I apologize. However, I have been listening to your discussion about the position. I do get complaints. And then I tell people that they need to call Mike, but I also make notes and books. I have to work with the health officer for animal, when I get an animal bite. I have emailed with no responses from health officer. But that's a different. So I'm not discussing that right now. However. Mike, yes, you were appointed at the June twelfth meeting. To have. Um, to be appointed by Jenny and it was voted. However, Tara did ask if it should be advertised for the open position. There's no discussion about having that open. Mike, you offered to stay on as health officer. However, my issue is that we all have to follow policy and procedures. You guys didn't follow the policy and procedures according to. The VLCT. Handbook for Vermont Town Officers. See, and I don't know the page number, but it says see filling vacancies. When there is a vacancy in an office, the select board has the authority to fill the vacancy. For with on a temporary basis until an annual or special meeting can be held. At which time the vacancy is filled. Next paragraph, when an office becomes vacant, the select board is required to post a notice. Of the vacancy in two public places in the town and in or near the town clerk's office. Within ten days of the vacancy. And there's a state statute, twenty four BSA, section nine six one. Note that the select board may fill the vacancy prior to posting of a vacancy. But it is to, a notices and to inform the public that the vacancy exists. So they have the opportunity to petition for a special election to fill the thing. So my thing is, so being that it's a three-year position. And I apologize for that noise because I don't know what it is. But, so. Um, the health officer position will expire in June twenty twenty seven.
I muted this one. I didn't know if that was picking it up.
Creating a reverb.
Uh, I didn't notice a difference.
But I have a, again. Julie, are, are you good to have conversation now or take a question?
No, yeah.
Okay, cool. Right, my, my thought about that though, um, and the reason I wasn't sure was that pertaining to a health officer. Is because it's not an elected position. So I'm not sure, right, if I, let's say that one of us were to. Leave the select board or have to sit down or something. I could see there being an argument, right, for the case of, oh, we need to hold a special election to fill that position. But in the instance where we, as a select board, make a nomination to appoint someone, the state approves that. I'm just not sure, for example, how we would even have a special election for a health officer.
Well. I wouldn't actually spend the money at doing a special election because of the cost of an election. However, I would like it to see at least advertised to see. If the people are interested. Because I've actually had two people ask about that position.
Yeah, I mean, I think it's one thing to post the fact that it's open. But I don't think it is correct to have an election for the health officer. I would be concerned about that. And that would be. Um.
I will email you on Monday when I come back in the office. That it is in writing and it is in a handbook.
Okay.
Because I've done my homework.
Thank you, Julie. I appreciate that.
There wouldn't be an election for a health officer because there's no election for the health officer. It's an appointed position by the select board.
Appointed, it's a pointed position. However, it can have a petition. Of two hundred and fifty signatures to require a petition for an election.
So Julie, the couple people that came forth with interest. Did you ask them to at least email the select board or any individual on a select board so we could pass it along?
I was waiting for the discussion first because I wanted to make sure. Because I know that the select board chair fills in for the position. And I just want to make sure policy and procedure is. Done.
Okay, I mean, because we did have a conversation and like Mike said. Because of the turnaround that we've had recently, over the recent years. That's why we've held, you know, we voted Mike into that position.
I'll be honest with you, Julie, since I've been sitting here, it gets a little aggravating. Um, because, because it is a tougher position. Uh, that, that, you know, we make a suggestion, the select board makes a suggestion to the state and then it becomes a state appointed person. And then it's a real difficult situation to get them out of that position once they're there. So now, now we operate eight or nine months without a health officer. Doing anything, saying nothing about doing what they should. And, and honestly, when you sit here as a select board member. And you have residents in the town that are screaming at us. Because there's health violations and we can't get ahold of a health officer because they don't respond. From our standpoint, from my standpoint, that gets a little old. It's, it becomes a little difficult. And at least. The way I look at it, at least if somebody's screaming that we're not doing our job, well, that's me and you can scream at me and I'll listen. And that's how I look at it right now at this point. If somebody, I, I've always been that person. If somebody wants the position. And, and they think that, you know, they, they come in here and they talk to you about the position, Tara's two doors down the hall. Hannah's one door down the hall. Stop in and say, hey, look, and I'm interested in the health officer position.
I've got, I pulled up the Vermont Department of Health and I will look at the statute as well. Julie, I appreciate that. But that's their THO manual for the town health officer appointment. And their step-by-step guide to town health officer appointment says, number one, the town clerk is notified. That the current THO's term is about to end through a letter from the Department of Health. Number two, the town clerk advises the select board or city council to recommend a new THO for appointment by the commissioner of health. Number three, the select board must complete the town health officer recommendation form. And the town health officer oath affirmation form. Number four, once completed, the town clerk emailed both forms to, and he gives you the email address. And then after receiving the forms, the health commissioner appoints the THO and sends out a certificate of appointment. So I, and I, and I, and I will double check the statute, but just by the step-by-step guide, that doesn't look like it's requiring. It to be posted for the health officers specifically.
Okay, so then I'm going to leave it alone and then I expect Michael to come in to my office on Monday. For the Baker.
Can you say that again so we don't have all the, whatever? Because there's so much feedback. I, I didn't, I just didn't catch it all, Julie.
So I would like you to come into my office on Monday. When you can, between eight thirty and four thirty to do the paperwork and stuff. So I can sit down with what I have to work with you on.
I'll be here at eight thirty, Monday morning.
Twenty and nine.
Okay, I'll be right here at eight thirty. Perfect.
Julie, thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Julie. Thank you.
Thank you.
Anything else on the health officer? Attorney policy review discussion and possible action.
I took the request um at the end of our discussion. At our last meeting to adjust the final. For being here. Pause here and it says, prior to contacting the town's attorney. Staff, board members and elected officials must first seek permission from the select board chair and select board vice chair. If either the select board chair or vice chair is unavailable. Then permission may be obtained from the available select board chair or chair and one or the, one other board member. So it was requested. I made the modification. So it's chair and vice chair, either of you are missing. Then the one who is available and another member of the select.
That would be for in cases like an emergency, other than like we were here and we made a decision.
Exactly. That's it. And it requires you go.
I think that's perfect.
Yep.
I'll, I'll entertain a motion to approve that policy.
I'll make a motion. Oh, I'll second. He approved. He motioned. You guys figure out. Hannah can figure out.
More discussion from the board? All of them favor? Uh, CAT TV contract. Uh, everybody read that. But the uh rates aren't going to take effect until the next fiscal year. Of June twenty sixth, so we're, we're staying with the same exact rates for fiscal year twenty five, twenty six. What's your pleasure on that contract?
Make a motion to accept it, right?
I'll second that.
It's written, I should say.
Right.
Sorry.
Yep. Something is written by CAT TV. I have a motion and a second. Any more questions on those concerns? All of them favor? Looks like just the chair signs this. I'm going to make sure I keep this in the right file. Okay. Deputy fire warden, fire warden resignation and recommendation. Please accept this email as I do not plan to reinstate my deputy fire warden position. I spoke with Kelsey from Vermont Fire Warden Program. She stated that I needed to reach out to the town and let them know. I recommend Jeff Miller take this position over. If this is something the town agrees to do, the select board would have to agree and then Kelsey would interview Jeff and make the final decision. Respectfully, Justin Olansky. And I believe that should be Jeff Miller Jr.
Yes. I will make a motion to accept the recommendation of Jeff Miller Jr. As assistant or deputy.
I think we have to accept the resignation.
Sorry.
Make a motion to accept Justin Olansky's resignation as deputy fire warden.
Second.
Any discussion? Regretfully, we accept. Um, all of them there? With regret for sure.
Yeah. Thank you.
Thank you, Justin, for your years of service. Okay.
Okay, now I'm out.
Now it's you, Carl.
I, I will make a recor- I will make a motion that we take Justin's. Um, recommendation and appoint Jeff Miller Jr. As deputy fire warden. Deputy, yeah, that's it, I guess.
Second that.
Well, we accept his.
We accept Justin's resignation.
We, right, but we. We accept Jeff's. Recommendation to, to the state, is that what you said?
Correct.
Okay, all right, sorry. Any more?
Because it's still, it's still up to the state to appoint him or not.
Okay. So I'm sure we're clear. Any more discussion? I have a second. I have a motion. All of them favor? All right, transfer station operator, job description and posting. Alright. Transfer station operator job description and posting discussion. Uh, Tom Powell seeking a qualified individual for a transfer station operator. It's a part-time job position, 20 hours a week with a pay rate of $17 an hour. Please visit our website for the full job description.
And I assume that'll be posted Monday?
Well, we need to vote.
Well, we need to vote for it, yes. If we approve it, it will be posted, I assume, Monday.
Does everybody read the?
Yes.
Yes.
Operator position. Okay, so job description for that, okay. Do I have a motion to, to hire that?
We'll move to order with the hiring of the transfer station operator job.
Second that, post it.
And applications will be accepted through July 25th. I have a motion and I have a second. Any more discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Just the day after our next meeting. I'm just wondering if we should change that date.
To 23rd.
Tara did have a plan. I think, I'm pretty sure that's what she said she wanted to do was
23rd.
Set it open until.
Until the 25th?
Well, 23rd.
That's a Friday. Our next meeting is the 24th.
Yeah.
We'll leave it like that. That's fine. So alright, we're, that's fine. We'll leave it like that.
We should leave it open-ended so that you can leave it up to Tara to.
Yeah, I think there's a, yeah. Well, I think we could just leave it. We need to change it before we can. That's fine. Um, which brings me to the transfer station. There's no way that Tom can run the transfer station on Saturdays with the compacters by himself. So until we can hire a, a helper, operator, whatever you want to call him. Joel's gonna have one of the road guys, our part-time road guy going on Saturdays. So he'll work four days, Monday through Friday. Excuse me. Um, and then it's a transfer station on Saturdays.
Okay.
Alright, there's just no way that.
Like there's no way he can do both.
There's no way Tom can run.
Not on Saturday.
Not on Saturday. That's the, hence the position for this, or the reason for this position. So we have that Saturday thing figured out.
Is it gonna be the same person every Saturday or is it a rotating person?
I think it's the same person every Saturday. It's our part-time employee that's doing the mowing. That's my understanding.
And he's already familiar with the money part of the job because that's what he has. He'll have to sit in the booth while Tom goes and runs the packer.
And the other thing is he's familiar with packing the other dumpsters with the backhoe and so on and so forth. He's equipment operators himself.
Yep.
Yeah.
Great.
Okay. Alright, public comment.
Did you guys approve the job description for transfer station?
No, we did not.
Thank you. It's right there in front of me. Did everyone read that job description for the, um? Everybody comfortable with that?
Yep.
Okay.
Make a motion to accept the job, the job descriptions for the transfer, transfer station operator.
Second that motion.
Any more discussion? All of them favor?
Aye. Thank you, Hannah.
Thanks, Hannah. Build me up.
Okay. Now, public comment.
Do you have any public comment going before I go to online?
Oh, happy to be in the South here.
Sorry, Jim.
Alright, thank you very much. Um, hello, people. Hey, I just wanted to.
Can you say your name, please?
Oh, I'm sorry, yes. Jim Cosus, North Mason Hill Road. I was just wondering if you could just, um, similar to the resolution or something, just to kind of remind the townspeople, um, the parents of the townspeople that um, might have purchased or allowed their, um, family to purchase dirt bikes. That there are certain roads in town that are designated for um, ATVs, dirt bikes, all terrain and vehicles and stuff. But unfortunately, on the Nile School Road area, um, Hidden Valley Road, maybe a little part of Ladbrook Road, um, Mason Hill Road North, we're, we're kind of getting inundated with dirt bikes, the kids that are just, um, showing their muscle and throttle to go up the roads at a high speed, speed without the proper mufflers. Um, I, I have to be totally honest, the ATV, ultra, um, ATVs, um, the adults have been very respectful for the neighbors, um, for the past year, two years. And I really want to just say, I really, really appreciate them when they go down the road at midnight or around then, that they are going slow and not disturbing us. But the dirt bikes now that school is out, um, is really causing a little situation here of um, the peace and quietness of the area and, um, they're just respect, non-respect for the citizens of the road that, um, we live on, even though they don't live on this road. So I was just hoping that you guys would just mention it to the parents out there that they need to talk to their kids and why they're riding up our road so fast versus just getting into the woods or trying to take the roads that are ATV, are not ATVs, but certain trails. Um, but I appreciate it. I know we have a limitation on our constables and everything, but I haven't called them because, um, you, you, I don't want anyone to think that I'm looking for a privilege up here, but I thank you very much and, um, have a good night.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any more public comment here?
Please hand up.
I think Jim's comment will be heard by people in general, parents in general. So I think that's been taken care of. I do think that respect goes a long way, um, all the way through. And if parents teach it at the age that these riders are at, then they'll be respectful when they come to a select board meeting like we had two weeks ago and so on and so forth. I think that goes a long way. No more, no other public comment? I want to entertain a motion to adjourn.
I want to adjourn.
I'll second that.
Any discussions? All of them favor?
Aye.
Thank you, everyone.
In the, uh, chair.